Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. This day, Thursday, the 13th of May, 2021. I note that all councillors, committee members are in attendance, no apologies. Do we have any declarations of interest, any matters on the agenda? No? We have nil business outstanding. So we will move to item number one, which is confirmation of minutes of the report, the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee number three of 2021 dated 15 April 2021. Can I have a mover, please? Thank you, councillor Milligan, and a second, thank you councillor Kunselman. So it's just a recommendation that the report be received and noted, no discussion? Sorry, ma'am?
If I may, obviously, one of the areas was supplementary motion ensuring that councils consult the councils, we're going the artworks.
Oh, yes.
Notice that it's in there, but I just say nothing has happened yet, so I'm not sure when we're getting consulted, so I'm just highlighting it, that we're looking forward to that consultation.
Yes, absolutely. Put the matter to the vote. Note that it's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number two, which is an officer's report, the Ipswich Central project update and notice of motion response. The report provides an update regarding the work done and options considered in relation to progressing the Ipswich Central revitalisation project, and in doing so responds to a notice of motion calling for an options report for Ipswich Central to be tabled in a future meeting of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. The recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. Could I have the relevant council officer come forward, please?
Good morning, Chair, Mayor and councillors, Cat Mattson, manager of Economic and Community Development.
Ms Mattson, would you mind just giving us a brief summary of the Ipswich Central master plan and where we've moved to today with that work?
Yeah, for sure, thank you, Chair. So Ipswich Central is an area that covers approximately 840 hectares, right in the heart of the Ipswich LGA. So you do have copies of the maps in your committee papers, but for those who are watching the live stream, imagine the areas that stretch from Ipswich Showgrounds to the west of Ipswich, north Ipswich rail yards, across to the north Ipswich Sporting Precinct, includes both the Grammar Schools, St Mary's and St Edmund's. It's a substantive parcel of land, and it represents what I would argue to be Ipswich's CBD and inner suburbs. Now, anyone would argue that even in a city of centres, which of course Ipswich is, you need to have a thriving and vibrant CBD. And over the last number of years, a lot of work has gone into defining, outlining visions, outlining master plans around what needs to happen in the Ipswich central area, what should happen. We have master plans, we have review documents, we've done community consultation. Work began at the end of 2019 to start bringing all of this work together, and in fact, at the end of 2019, the existing Ipswich Central master plan was reviewed. It was deemed in this piece of work that no further master plan needs to be created right now. Instead, what we need is a more unifying vision or a unifying picture of what keeps Ipswich Central unique to Ipswich? What industries, what businesses, what use mix do we need to plan for, attract and invite into Ipswich Central to basically bring back that vibrancy into Ipswich Central? So obviously, the work that's been done on Nicholas Street to date has been a key part of the Ipswich Central revitalisation project, but the other work that's been going on in the background is how do we actually articulate the vision for Ipswich Central and how do we get the community on board? How do we actually get everyone, investors, government, all levels of government, existing businesses and residents, on board to share that vision? So we were asked to prepare an options paper, we reviewed all of the work that had been done to date, and we have discussed with you, Chair, a number of different options, and we've started work on what we see as the key need, developing a positioning framework, which is essentially that clearly articulated vision on what we're heading towards, as well as two place-making projects or two place plans, one for Ipswich Centre Core and one for top of town. I'll explain the place plans in a second, but first of all, I want to explain the positioning framework. Anyone who has run a business, anyone who has even worked in corporate, would be familiar with the concept of a business plan, literally, how do you use a business's resources and how do you align them to achieve strategic competitive advantage? If you think of the positioning framework as a spatial business plan, how do we align the resources and the assets of Ipswich Central to create competitive advantage and a thriving, viable, sustainable, highly desirable, livable Ipswich Central area? So the positioning framework is designed to do just that, bring everybody around the table and articulate what specifically are we trying to create here, not just the hard infrastructure of the buildings, the roads, but also the soft and the cultural infrastructure? What kind of activities do we want to encourage here? What kind of business types do we want to encourage? The place plans then actually help bring those visions to life by bringing the relevant traders, residents and community members of those specific precincts within the precinct together to co-create something that they're proud of. We've seen this work in other areas, particularly in Brisbane, where they've rolled this out in a couple of other precincts, as well as around the country, and we're really excited already by the feedback that we've received from the local traders. It's really important to note that even though the report in front of you looks like it's presenting new information, it's building on the consultation that has been done since 2018, it's built on the existing master plan, it's built on the review of that master plan, and it's incorporating all of the work that's been done to date. So this is a coordination project with all departments and all teams within council to ensure that we're creating an Ipswich Central that not just is exciting and interesting now, but is fit for purpose for this region over the next 25 years.
Thank you. This is a very important piece of work that we're doing, you know, defining who we are within Ipswich, within our CBD, and attracting investors and the right industries. Residents, you know, every day are saying, we want to see shops filled, the empty spaces within our CBD, so this piece of work will assist in attracting new businesses.
Very much, very much. This piece of work is designed to not only attract new businesses, but to encourage and provide confidence to existing businesses to grow their own. It also is designed to help existing property owners to make decisions that will support the wider vision for Ipswich Central. When we talk to stakeholders in the area, one of the things that has held them back on investment is a lack of clarity around where the city is going. Investors need to know, well, what's council going to do? What's state government going to do? What's happening with West Morton Health? What kind of tenancies, for example, do we need to attract? So this piece of work is very much designed to give that confidence and to ensure that we are curating an Ipswich Central experience that we want for our city, that is still specific to Ipswich's heritage and culture. It's not about modernising and gentrification, it's not about whitewashing the entire city, it's about making sure that Ipswich Central remains specific and unique to Ipswich and becomes a destination that people want to be part of, and that they know when they're in it, they're in Ipswich Central. There's no mistaking that they're here, not in some other city.
The Ipswich Central master plan you mentioned did include community consultation. Can I just understand that a little more? Because consultation is really important, we hear that from residents all the time, that sometimes they feel a little bit excluded and aren't consulted.
Totally understand. So on page four of the committee report, that might be different page numbers to how you've received it in your papers, there's a series of italics underneath the community and other consultation section. I'll just read it out for the purposes of the live stream. In November 2019, an invitation was sent to the business Ipswich database of approximately 400, inviting stakeholders to attend two external workshops in early December. Ipswich First also published a story inviting the community to be part of these workshops. The workshops were two hours in length, which were interactive and facilitated by Co-Design Studio with the assistance of V Design, who have worked with us on a number of other projects in Ipswich Central. I'll skip down. The two workshops had 32 people in total, with an additional 50 responses on Shape Your Ipswich. On 31 January 2020, Co-Design and V Design held an internal workshop with approximately 35 people from across council, including section managers, branch managers, general managers and subject matter experts. We're continuing the engagement as well, Chair. I don't have my numbers to hand, but we are having one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders to understand what they would like from the city and also what they need as an output from this piece of work to give them the confidence that they need to invest and grow their businesses.
Okay, great. Does anyone else have any questions?
I do. Thank you for this, and I guess just looking through this, I was looking at some of the report I'm looking at is that, let me just look at the page. The update, I guess, February 2020, defining the next steps. Just some feedback, we're looking at, I guess, section one here, the pink area, which is called Ipswich Centre Core, which does include the top of town, that's area number five in the yellow there. I get a lot of feedback from businesses who are, I guess, to the east of East Street, sometimes referred to as the bottom of town, it's a term they really don't like, and I've had some discussions with them, and whether we split that in two, or whether we call that the commercial district or something like that, I think, when you look at the businesses there, I think that's something that we should be looking at and listening to the traders there, they're the ones with the businesses there. And top of town's been a huge success from a marketing perspective, and it's quite a niche retail offering and cafe and restaurant offering up there as well. So it's nice to be able to capture something similar for the business owners.
Agreed, Maron, thank you.
And that east of East Street.
East of East Street, east, east. Instead of a west end, we could have an east end.
East end, that's right.
Thank you, Maron, that is excellent feedback. One of the things that we are doing through this piece of consultation and this piece of work is actually identifying and articulating which sub precincts need to be named and called out specifically, which need to be signposted perhaps as destinations of their own accord, or which just become known about town, I think to Brisbane, and you know, there's the Eagle Street precinct and there's the Mall precinct, they're not called out specifically in terms of signage, but they become known as these areas. As we, it's actually an extraordinarily exciting opportunity that Ipswich has to define the future of its central area, because we can say, well, you know what, this part of Ipswich Central, we will define as the commercial precinct, or this will be the medical services precinct. And so attracting and curating experiences where like businesses can work together, where like customers and clients can come in together, is quite exciting. So totally agree, and yeah, downtown or bottom of town probably doesn't have the same ring as top of town, but that'll be very much led by the community.
Yeah. And just a couple of pages over, we talk about exploring Ipswich, and there were three, we look at, we're a city of centres, and I see that you're looking at three target areas, Ipswich Central, Ripley and Springfield. May I ask what the methodology behind that is? Because when I look at our city of centres, limiting to three is probably not where I would like to be, I'd be looking at, you know, Rosewood and Russell and Goodne, or what was the methodology or the reason for that?
I will need to take that as a question I noticed, that piece of work was completed before my time, and I'm not familiar with how they were chosen, but I'll come back to you.
Thank you. And I guess the other thing, the database of 400 business users I know in the past has been hit and miss, so I guess I wouldn't mind speaking offline, did we send that to the chamber, was every single business in the CBD approached, do we have their contact details? Because it's not always been the case in the past, so.
So that 400 database that was utilised in 2019 has been significantly improved during that time, and in fact, one of the side effects, if you like, of the COVID engagement that we did was to actually door knock pretty much every business in the top of town and down Brisbane Street, in Brisbane Central, as well as a number of other surrounding businesses. That plus the small business funding programme, other programmes, meant that we've got a much deeper database now. I can't tell you off the top of my head how big that database is, but I know that when we do the Ipswich Central business briefings, it's going to a database of more than 400 now.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly a good point to note, Maron, now in the past, on occasion, we have relied on a database, for instance, from the Ipswich Chamber of Commerce, but noting that not all local businesses are a member of that, so.
Yeah, and we're very cognisant to not just be engaging in online channels, you know, people who are in Ipswich Central aren't necessarily following Ipswich City Council online channels, Facebook feeds and so on, so we actually also need to meet them in offline environments as well.
As you know, businesspeople are usually very busy, they work really long hours, we need to, yeah, as approachable as possible.
And thank you, I know we've had discussions recently about the list of stakeholders that you have been talking to, and certainly many of those, I don't believe, are a member of the local Chamber of Commerce, however, have held properties within the CBD for many years, and it's great to see that you're seeking their feedback and input, because they do hold a lot of knowledge.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open it up for discussion.
I guess you and I have discussed this, councillor, just the importance of involving the business community, as well as the people who actually be impacted on this as well.
Absolutely, and just on that, you know, when I'm observing at the retail subcommittees or attending the Ipswich Central master plan updates with Ms Mattson, we are constantly having those discussions and they're updating me. Council officers have been fantastic in keeping myself in the loop on the various stakeholders involved, and I'm confident that the right people around town are being spoken to, but that will obviously always be a work in progress.
Yeah, I guess, well, we've discussed the past, it's one thing to be, you know, engaged, another thing to be consulted, and we just, is it a one-way, are we just telling them stuff or are we actually stopping and listening?
Absolutely.
There's a time and a place for both.
Yeah, for sure, and, you know, I think we all acknowledge that our property owners around the CBD and our business owners hold a lot of knowledge, they've persevered through years of, you know, a dying CBD, and they have a lot of knowledge, and they also have a lot of views on what doesn't work and ideas on what will work and what they want to see. So it's important we harness that.
Yeah, I think they've got the experience, they've certainly got the resilience and the optimism, they have that belief in our CBD.
Absolutely. Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number three, officer's report, the Nicholas Street Precinct Retail Sub Project Committee, Steering Committee, report from April 2021. Recommendation being that the report be received and the contents noted. Can I ask the relevant council officer to come forward, please? Good afternoon, would you please state your name?
Good afternoon, Chair, Mayor and councillors, I'm James Hepburn, and I chair the Retail Subcommittee.
Mr Hepburn, can you just give us a quick update on the status of the retail leasing? How many heads of agreement we have in place? When that's likely to move to executed leases? And I guess, noting that we also have the EIO process in place for the cinema, how many of those retail leases potentially hinge on that cinema deal?
Yes, of course. The leasing for Eats and Metro B is still tracking quite well, there are 13 deals with agreed heads of terms and/or in legals, as it stands. There have been two new deals since we last reported, and one has fallen away, one's for a new restaurant tenancy and the other's to replace, shall we say, a beauty orientated tenant within Metro B. And what that does is actually, it was a swap out that we decided to take on because it improved the covenant strength and the rental offer, therefore improving our financial position. But as is the nature with retail leasing, some of it does go down to the wire, but where we're at at the moment is that we have still ample time prior to the contractor handing over the shelves to the potential tenants for them to go in to fit out, which will then lead on to the openings of later this year for Eats, as well as sort of this time-ish, Easter-ish next year for Metro B. One thing I will note before I move on to the cinema piece is that there is a Commonwealth Hotel, agreed heads of terms, that will be finding its way to the office of the CEO in the not-so-distant future, and I'll pick up on the Commonwealth Hotel perhaps at the end of this. The cinema EOI, as you mentioned, is actually going very well, as stated before, we've got KPMG assisting us with that process. We are only a matter of weeks now from releasing the RFT second round of that to the prospective cinema operators, and that's on track to deliver us a cinema operator to bring back to this forum as a recommendation in end of July, perhaps August timeframe. Going back to the comment about how reliant perhaps is Eats, Metro B and the wider city, particularly Nicholas Street on the cinema, the view of the team, that it's very reliant. There are a number of deals coming through, particularly in Metro B, that relate directly to the opening of a cinema. There are a couple of tenants that perhaps potentially would pull out if a cinema was to be delayed or did not proceed. I think Eats and generally speaking, things should be fine, but if you were to look two, three years hence, we just see a rental reduction perhaps, an evaluation reduction in the work that we're delivering right now in terms of the construction work within Metro B, which if anyone has been down in the last couple of weeks would see that it's significantly progressed in terms of strip out and demolition of the Metro B building.
I just have a question around the cinema deal. Within the papers, so, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were originally working with one operator within the realms of our ministerial exemption, which applies to a lease arrangement only. The requirement to then go out for an EOI was brought about because of the shift, I guess, in market around COVID and a desire by operators to have a management arrangement as opposed to a lease, and obviously, our exemption wouldn't cover that. I now see reference to the, within the EOI, the number of those that have put forward proposals, there is a reference to lease and/or management agreement, is that now a shift back to the pre-COVID days of leasing?
I think.
So, and I'm conscious, obviously, for confidentiality.
Yes, no, of course. It's always been our preference to lead on a lease negotiation, that's how we started this journey a number of years ago, there was a delay due to COVID and the cinema industry essentially collapsing last year, and we're starting to see that rebound at the moment, and even actually just yesterday, a brand new cinema opened at M City down on the outskirts of Melbourne with Village Roadshow, which is a fantastic sign for the entire industry. Where we got to at the end of last year was because things had got so tough, the incumbent tenant that we were talking to wanted to switch from a lease scenario to a management agreement, and that then stepped outside of our ministerial exemption. So the purpose of the EOI has been to retest both scenarios, and that way, we're not reliant on ministerial exemption, because we're actually looking at what is the best financial and civic offer for the precinct and wider it's switched through this process. So once we get to the end of this, particularly with the assistance of the analytical team at KPMG, we'll be able to look at the finance side of both the management agreement and the leases, they're very different animals when you get into the legalities of it.
Okay. And I just have a question. Okay. Um, and I just have a question around leasing. Obviously, fast approaching the, um, opening of the new council administration uh, centre. Uh, my understanding is Level Two will, um, uh, include a, a private tenant at some stage. How are we going with, um, getting somebody into that space?
We've had some initial interest, um, but as expected, it was going to be very slow until the space was up and ready.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as, as it stands, we're about to bring forth with the procurement team, um, a process to select a commercial leasing agent to do two things. One, provide us with the strategic, um, overview on what do we do, type of tenant we should aim for, the rents we should try and achieve and the term that we should aim for, for, for Level Two of the administration building, but also to overlay that with other office space that we have. So in the totality, in Nicholas Street, we have about five hundred square metres above the Eats building, which would take a substantial tenant. We have a, a couple of levels free in one four three Brisbane Street. And then we have the almost semi-redundant Two Bell Street building, which the project team currently occupy. So our, our office portfolio in that area is actually quite big and varied. And the second part of that procurement process will be essentially based on price and getting out into the market to, to find tenants for all of these buildings. But clearly the focus is going to be on the administration building. Um, and the reality is that once that building is, is up and running and pumping, it's the best time to bring it to the market. So we've been holding it back a little bit, if I'm to be honest.
Good. Um, yeah, it will be great to see that space filled and, and working for the city and providing a return, so. Um, my only other question relates to the opening of the library, so, um, yeah, sorry.
The Level Two, does, does that have to be one tenant or could it be subdivided?
It could be subdivided. Um, that adds cost, um, and, um, may not be the most attractive investment position we want to look at. So there are, we're going to have to look at a lot of different scenarios, um, when it comes to that space. But, you know, a preference would be to find a, a blue chip company with a great covenant strength who, who put two hundred people on that level and, and take the whole thing out.
Thank you.
Um, the Commonwealth Hotel is looking incredible. Um, we know we're opening up the, um, One Nicholas Street at the end of next month. Is it possible for people to have a look through the Commonwealth Hotel at some stage? Or is it going to be, not going to be open until a tenant's in there? What's the, because it looks amazing.
Well, I'm delighted, if it hasn't already fed through, to inform you that the Commonwealth Hotel practically completed only a few days ago.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have, we have the building back in our, our hands. Um, it does look fantastic. Um, I went through it yesterday, um, with our prospective tenant.
Yes.
Which is the deal we'll be bringing forwards later in the week. Um, and I think we were all very excited. So we'll, we can certainly organise tours. Um, I know we need to reach out to Heritage Groups and we need to restart talking about, um, about that building a lot more.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll, between myself and Greg, we'll, we'll reach out and happily organise that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Hepburn? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just had a question around the opening of the library mentioned, Mr. Poll.
Thank you, Chair, Mayor, Councillors, Ben Poll, General Manager, Community Cultural and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Poll. I was just wondering if you can give us a quick update. Obviously, the administration building, um, opening fast approaching. And importantly, the dedicated children's library, um, will open at the same time. So just, um, trying to understand that the, um, the opening date is, is on track. Library staff are, are preparing for an opening, um, and what, I guess, um, marketing we are doing to let the community know, including schools, principals and school librarians, know that this, um, amazing, unique space will soon be available.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, look, the library staff couldn't be more excited about the upcoming opening of, of the Ipswich Children's Library. So the dates that have been set for both the opening of the children's library and One Nicholas Street, the administration building, is, uh, Monday, the twenty eighth, uh, of, uh, of July, sorry, June, Monday, the twenty eighth of June. Um, we're just finalising, I suppose, that agenda and that schedule at the moment, and it'll be promoted publicly, I would suggest, uh, as of about next week. Um, in terms of, uh, things being on track for both of those openings, certainly the, uh, the children's library is absolutely on track uh, and, and ready to be, uh, opened and delivered, uh, ready for public usage. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm certain and confident, based on the conversations I've had with the people in charge of the opening of the administration building, uh, that, that facility is on track as well. Uh, your other question relating to?
Uh, yeah, no, well, um, it was really just the, the promotion and, and, um, getting it out to the, out to the community, including schools, um, that the facility's opening. So, but you've mentioned there will be marketing going forward.
Yes, and, and we're certainly looking at an opportunity to engage with educators, not just within Ipswich Central, but more broadly across the city of Ipswich. Introducing them to, uh, the broad portfolio of library services, not just the children's library, but in particular, that one would be of interest. Uh, but really creating that network, uh, of educators and helping them understand what, what programming, what, uh, services these facilities provide right across the city. But there is a unique offering, um, within the children's library as well that will be of interest to a certain segment of, of those, um, operators.
I think from a tourist, um, perspective a, as well, it's a great offering, a great opportunity, um, to attract visitors. Um, to, to have a look at the, the beautiful dedicated children's library, so. And, um, a big thank you to the staff. I know they, um, it was a seamless move from, well, they probably wouldn't view it as seamless, but to the outside world. They did a remarkable job in, in opening up the new main library, so, um, I'm confident they're working hard and, yeah.
And if I just take that point a little bit further as well, um, as of about next week, the general public will start, uh, to get information about the relocation of all of council services from this, uh, precinct to the new precinct. So when they're, um, anticipating needing the services of council, whether that's coming in directly, um, to pay bills or rates or, or just engage with the customer service here at the administration building. We're starting all of that communication now to make people aware of when that change is going to take place and exactly how they can engage with us in the new facility.
Yeah.
So that'll be, uh, I guess commencing as of next week.
It's just a great opportunity to activate the space, um, down in the Nicholas Street Precinct. It's, it's another drawcard, um, and to bring in the families and, and the children, um, to discover not only the children's library, but then, you know, there's the opportunity to discover what else is there and, and start bringing our people in. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Um, and to start bringing in the community groups.
Of course, yes.
So, uh. With the many, with the many meeting rooms in the new, uh, One Nicholas Street.
Yeah. If I pick up on that point, yes, we'll be communicating, um, shortly. We've already started discussing with some of the, the current users of, uh, spaces such as the Humanities Building or previous users of the Humanities Building. What kind of bookable spaces, but also, uh, not just meeting spaces and bookable meeting spaces, but event spaces. So we've got now more, I suppose you'd call it, um, larger to event spaces available for the general community to book than we have had previously. Uh, we'll be in that process of communicating that to the community again, probably as of next week.
Thank you. I guess, um, it's my understanding with the, um, looking at services as, as we relocate down there that we'll have to have some changes in the two weeks leading up to the opening on that twenty eighth. I think that's, would be reasonable.
Yes, yes, that's right. And, and that's part of what the, the, the communication plan, starting next week, we'll need to be articulating is will there be any, um, uh, impact on the services being delivered? Or what the workarounds are there if you're not able to access this building or the other building? But we've certainly thought through all of those things and we're, uh, confident that we're, we're able to provide a continuous service to, to the customers during that transition period, which council will be literally moving, um, a few hundred people and many, many services from this precinct, um, to the new precinct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Poll.
Thank you.
Now open up for discussion. Is there any further dis? Sorry, we're doing it again, undoing it again. Could I have a mover, please? Thank you, Mayor Harding. And a second, uh, councillor Milligan, thank you. Now open up for discussion. Mayor Harding.
I guess I'm feeling a bit of enthusiasm too, uh, Chair. Uh, and, and what's happening here in the great space here, but also knowing that I'm looking forward to getting the more information out in regards to the opening of the, of the, the One Nicholas Street building, but also the children's library. And trying to make sure we can have as open as possible to get as many people through, to see the council chambers and to all that sort of stuff. So it'll be very interesting to see how that goes. I know with COVID, we can only have so many people up in the lift at a time and things like that. But, yeah, very interesting to see how we're going to activate that as, as well.
Absolutely, Mayor. I agree. This is, uh, the city's asset, the One Nicholas Street building. Um, you know, some will, um, call it the, the ivory tower or the, the, you know, the bureaucrat's house, but it, it is not. This is a city asset. Um, it complements the entire precinct. The, the, the city centre, our heartbeat, is, is there again. Um, and we, you know, have the dedicated children's library, um, opportunities to attract, um, people, not residents from Ipswich, but afar as well to come back and, and have a look at Ipswich, who we are these days. And really proud to show off what we've got, but also the opportunity on Level Two, um, to, to get a, a private tenant and, and, and get some income. Um, bit of a return on the investment there. So, uh, lots of opportunities, looking forward to it.
Hoping the residents, the public feel that the building's inviting, you know, with, not just the libraries, but, you know, when you come in for, for customer service, you know, you can see that it's been architecturally designed to be, you know, that, that, to be inviting, I guess. And same as you, you know, go upstairs to that first level with all the, the meeting rooms and hopefully that other, the other areas outside the council chamber is also, um, an inviting, welcoming space for our residents.
Hmm.
What strikes me is that it's a building for the future as well. It's going to last a long time and it's going to be contemporary for a long time as well.
Absolutely.
Really excited.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. There's no further discussion? We might put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Noting that it's unanimous and carried. Uh, before I move on to item number four, I have been moving at such a pace this morning that, uh, item two, um, prior to the vote, I did not call for a mover and a seconder. Thank you for picking that up. So procedurally, we just moved back to item number two. Um, which was the, uh, Ipswich Central Project, um, update and the notice of motion response. So could I have a mover for that, please? Um, thank you, councillor Kunzelman. And a seconder. Thank you, Mayor Harding. And we don't need to take the matter to the vote, um, again for, for completeness? No? Okay. All right. So we will move on to the final item on the agenda. Item number four, which is the, uh, Nicholas Street Precinct Communications Engagement and Events Report. Um, planned for May twenty twenty one. The recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. Would anybody like to speak to the relevant council officer? No? Okay. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Milligan and a seconder. Thank you. Councillor Kunzelman. Now open it up for discussion.
If I.
Thank you, Mayor.
May, uh, Chair, um, I know in the past that they've had the list of events that were coming through and one of them was the State of Origin.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I was, I should have asked a question if it was still happening because it's, what, the first game's the ninth of, of June. Because we've now got the big screen there on the bar. Um, the next question is, is, are we, are we having the State of Origin being displayed? Okay. So thank you. I should have asked the question. Yeah.
Would you like the council officer to come down?
Is it okay? My apologies, Chair.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and title?
Uh, good afternoon, Chair, Mayor and Councillors. Karen Sutton, Communications, uh, Events and Engagement Manager for Nicholas Street Precinct.
Yes. So I just wanted to know about the State of Origin.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's three games planned at the moment. So two games that are, are first up in June. We do get to use our brand new shiny screen, which we are currently practising and, uh, working out all of the specifics of it. Uh, at this stage, we have planned to, uh, show, show the game, have some food trucks around, uh, and incorporate some of the local businesses as well. So we're just engaging those, uh, food trucks and those vendors at the moment and, uh, we'll start the advertising very shortly.
Okay. Uh, and when people go there, do they bring their own chairs? Will there be chairs there or is it blanket? There's only so much grassed area.
Exactly. Yeah. So we're just working through the layout, but yeah, we'll actually invite both of that.
Okay.
Um, invite them to bring their own chairs and blankets and get comfortable, but otherwise we do set, do have some seating and, um, available areas set out as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, last, did we put that matter to the vote? Did I call for a second? We did. We went to discussion, I think. Yes, I did. Mover, yes. So is there any further discussion? No? I, I do note, uh, earlier, I think it was during the Economic Development Committee that, um, we mentioned, uh, somebody mentioned, um, Ipswich City residents being, uh, lovers of all things, uh, motor racing and mention of, um, pitchelheads. But I do know, we also love our footy. We love our footy. So delighted that we'll be activating the space because I think that will be very well received and, and well attended. Okay, there's no further discussion. Put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, noting it's unanimous and carried. Um, there are nil, uh, notices of motion or matters arising. So that brings this committee to a close at five minutes to one. Thank you.